Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, February 10th, 2015. The opening prayer will be given by Pastor Doug Valentine of the First Baptist Church of Wallingford. Please rise.
Will you pray with me? Oh, Father God, you tell us in Scripture, in the book of James 1:5, that if we need wisdom, that you will give it and you will give it to us generously. So, Lord, I ask for wisdom for the leaders of this our town. Lord, that they may continue to do what is right by you, to do your will, and that this town would be doing exactly that. And, Lord, also, you tell us in Philippians that we can give you all of our concerns, and the peace of Christ will guide our hearts and our minds. So, Lord, I ask that for each one, as they make these decisions, Lord, that they would commit their intent to you, and that they would make that decision, and then they would be at peace in it, that they would be able to go forward, knowing that you blessed their efforts. In Jesus's name, amen.
We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, Republic of Republicans, our nation, our God, indivisible, liberating, justice, moral.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fishbein, Laffin.
Here.
Laterno.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Parisi.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Sullivan. Testa. Chairman Savoni.
Here. Councilors Fishbein, Sullivan, and Testa all had other commitments that they were unable to resolve in favor of attending this meeting, and they advised me of the same in advance. Item three.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through I.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, public question and answer period. Mr. Morgenstein.
Evening. Larry Morgenstein, South Main Street, through the chair to the mayor, please. Unfortunately, we've had another incident with vandalism in the last few weeks with spray painting at the church, private property, town property. I've been up here a number of times talking about the gazebo. I know that Counselor Fishbein was talking about reallocating police down towards that area. My question for the mayor is, we've had a series of incidents, pretty much once a month when you take all of them together. There was also an incident at the synagogue where there was also some graffiti about a month or two ago that didn't get reported in the paper. Are you thinking of doing anything along those lines?
I've been in touch with the police department. As you're aware, arrests were made with regarding at least one or more of those incidents, and the chief feels that they are on top of the issue.
Well, I guess my feeling is, or my input into that, is that we're looking at that downtown area as a place that we want to develop, and we also send out a message about the way we care for it. We've had these incidents, we've had benches that haven't been maintained, we've had the trees where we've had stumps, we've had derelict buildings, there's been complaints about loitering and drugs in that area. Again, this is an area that we're looking for economic development, and what message are we sending when we see this as a continual cycle? It's a good thing that some people were caught this time, but what is the overall message that we're giving?
I think the overall message is that we don't tolerate vandalism, and arrests have been made. At this point, I'm satisfied that the police are on top of that issue.
Again, I've been up here a number of times. There was a series of, four times, at the gazebo, and nobody's been caught, there's been no things taken, and there is new graffiti there, only this time, instead of hateful, it says, "I love Lolly World," which is a little more preferable to what's been there before, but the problem continues.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Mr. Hein.
James Hein, 342 South Elm Street. I was just wondering if there's an update on the status of the applications for the expansion of the parking lot at Pat Wall Field.
Mary, are you aware of any?
I have no update. The engineering department would be working on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Morgenstein.
Larry Morgenstein, through the chair to the mayor, please.
Sure.
At the end of December, one of the families that had the tainted wells came to this chamber and asked for an update, that there still hadn't been a resolution. At that time, you talked about looking into it. These people have had their wells tainted for over two years now. I believe the grant for tying in from the state was from June of 2013. Have you looked into it? Is there an update on that?
The Director of Utilities, George Adair, was in touch with the property owner. The issues over extending water into that area are still being investigated by our water department. We need approvals from the various property owners. At this time, their water is safe. Water purifiers were installed by the state of Connecticut in all of the properties there. So, it's just a question of whether municipal water will ultimately be extended there, which depends upon a lot of other factors, and all of those things are under discussion.
Yeah, it's very unfortunate, though, because that was pretty much established at the end of 2013, and now we're into 2015, and that's still not resolved for these people. It's pretty unfortunate.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I close the public question and answer period. Onto item six.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a transfer in the amount of $13,750 to the waste compost account from the Ball Field mower accounts.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Good evening, Mr. McCully.
Good evening. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too. It's snowing, isn't it?
Not now. I'd like to give you a little background on this transfer.
Please.
On October 31st, our last contractor, We Care Organics, out of New York, completed their four-and-a-half-year status as the operator of the compost site. Part of their, at the transition, where we were bringing in our new contractor, Harvest New England, they were required, as part of their contract, to leave the site clean for the new operator. We held a transition meeting at the end of September in my office. We Care Organics from New York was told at that time that they needed to clean the site up for the new operator. They have failed to do that. They could have continued to remove the debris that was left up until now, they simply refused to do it. Because of that, we held up their last month's payment in the amount of $11,900, here somewhere, They haven't been paid. The town was left with, or the new operator was left with a pile of composted material. It was 3,800 cubic yards. The new contractor removed that compost so that they could start to operate the site efficiently, get out of their way. We paid them $7,499 to remove that, and that has been accomplished. However, there was another 5,000 cubic yards of material that is called overs, that I described when I submitted my transfer. And basically, what it is, is wood, some earth materials, and other debris that have been accumulated over the last four-and-a-half years. We had to put that out to bid, and the bids came in at $2.75 a cubic yard, and that's where the $13,750 comes from, and hence the transfer from the savings and our capital purchase account to pay for this. The law department will be pursuing We Care Organics to recover the $9,000-plus dollars that they are owed, they owe the town.
Thank you, Mr. McCully. Are there questions from the council? Seeing none, are there questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Parisi.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. McCully.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
We do have a late addendum to the agenda. Counselor Laffin.
Mr. Chairman, if I can be entertained by the council and members of the fireworks committee, I'd like to make a motion to waive Rule 5 in order to have a vote and discussion on the acceptance of a grant for the Center Street Cemetery.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor waiving Rule 5, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Darian.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the financial assistance proposal from the Department of Economic and Community Development in the amount of $275,000 for the construction of a new equipment garage and office building at the Center Street Cemetery.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Good evening, Mr. Rowe.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for entertaining this item. I think in my cover letter, I explained to you how it is that we had looked to come before you tonight because of a 30-day turnaround time, that while there were two different dates we could key off of, almost in both of those instances, your next meeting was not going to be timely enough. So, we looked to move ahead at this meeting. That is pretty much it in a nutshell. The state has offered the town, you know, $275,000 to construct the garage and office, the new garage and office building.
Thank you. Mayor?
Just by way of updating, the architect has been hired, a design is under development. I think it probably will come to the council before it's put out to bid, and then ultimately we would be awarding a bid, and having this in place, obviously, will be a big help. That is, the grant of 275. This grant is a reimbursement, so we will have to approve funding and then be reimbursed by the state.
Is that correct, Don?
That's correct. Thank you.
Questions from the council? Counselor Laterno.
Good evening, Don.
Good evening.
Don, could you explain the, I'm just trying to understand, the proposal is transmitted to the town on January 26th, identifies a project start date of January 12th. So, you got the information on the 26th with a start date on the 12th?
I don't know that I can explain that, quite frankly. We've seen that happen before, where something gets approved at one level, but it just takes a period of time for them to assemble the documents and get it out to the recipient. So, that's sort of my view of probably what happened. It was approved at one date, and then it took a period of time to assemble the documents, that the first phase of documents, if you will, to get to the town.
And what do they mean by a project start date? What is actually going to start on the 12th? Or what started on the 12th that we didn't know about?
What started on the 12th is they were making funding available on a reimbursement basis. That's how I understand it, all right? The actual term for the grant will be something that will work out, all right, going forward with the state. This is the first step, where we say, yes, we are interested in proceeding to the next step.
And this was the 275? That's the amount that was approved in the governor's?
The bond commission.
Bond commission. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Just a clarification. So, the bond commission approved the monies and has appropriated the monies. So, the check would be in our hands. This isn't, we don't have another step at the state level to secure the money.
Well, the check won't be in our hands. It's a reimbursement arrangement, so we'll enter into a contract, I believe. The contract then allows for reimbursement of eligible costs, and as we approve the building and ultimately enter into a construction contract, then any eligible cost would be sent to the state for reimbursement, and it may take some time for them to be approved because sometimes it's an issue of audit and their review of what was eligible and ineligible. But, Don, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, we have not yet got to that level of discussion with them in terms of partial, things like partial reimbursement, that kind of thing. We haven't had those discussions yet.
So, at this point, we're just voting tonight to say, yes, thank you, take the money, and then the rest of the procedures will follow according to our town council protocols and such. Okay. There, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Any questions or comments from the public? Mrs. Morgenstein.
Gina Morgenstein, South Main Street. Can I ask what Rule 5 is that we have suspended?
Rule 5 of our rules allows us to add items to the agenda if the council by majority votes in favor of adding an item to the agenda.
And is there any rule to how many numbers of counselors are absent? This is kind of a large number of counselors absent tonight.
We do have a quorum.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Parisi.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Certainly. Item seven, discussion with respect to fireworks. Counselor Sullivan is unavailable. Mr. Zandry, I understand that this item is at your request, and I'm going to invite you to come forward, and Counselor Russo will introduce the item.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening. Thank you very much for entertaining the item.
Yeah, just to get back, Counselor Sullivan is away, and he asked me to step in for him, and this is just basically a discussion with respects to the 2015 fireworks, and I did put together, and this is with Jason's approval, he did send an email to Mr. Sullivan, and I did cut and paste that into a Word document that I had for backup material for the rest of the counselors, so they have that email along. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, basically, one of the reasons why I wanted to approach the council this year is, at a departure from what I normally do, is each year, basically since 2010, because 2010, we kind of just hit the ground and just did whatever we could do, I had, I met with the mayor each year after that, the first two years, and then the subsequent two years after that, which were the prior two, I just made a phone call to basically touch base with him to make sure the town was still willing to put on the show if we could fundraise the entire amount, you know, that there wasn't any reason that his office or the council or the town felt like they didn't want to engage if the funds could be put together. Each year, I would ask, you know, for the town to partner with the fund, with the respect of the city services, because with respect to all the different things that occur in this town, whether they're done by the town itself or through nonprofits, there's generally speaking not any chargeback or cross-charging between the departments. And since this show has been scuttled, and we've been putting it together, we basically have been funding everything. Since the inception, the fundraising by the fund and by the residents of Wallingford and the businesses, we've put together $127,000 over the five years to make sure this show stays as a mainstay of this town. Of that, $40,000 has been police overtime, $10,000 has been the fire department overtime, and the fire marshal charges and public works come to about another $5,000. The main issue that we have is really twofold. The first problem, the first issue that we've got is, we've got a lot of, we get a lot of pushback from people that are willing to make the donations as to why we're being obligated to come up with the cost of city services when it doesn't occur anywhere else for anybody else. And I basically just identify that that's a requirement in order to try to keep this thing going. The second issue, with direct respect to this particular year, is the fact that the Fourth of July falls dead center on the Saturday. So, just as a little bit of background of what that actually means, we've actually gotten the cost of this show down over the years, with the exception of the city services, which increase, the cost of the show itself goes down because it's a competitive thing. You know, the vendors are looking to try and strike a deal to get more jobs, and that's easier to do when the Fourth of July is on Wednesday, because some towns, some parks, some resorts, wherever, might be having the fireworks, some will do it on the Fourth, some will do it on the Friday, some will do it on the Saturday. So, different vendors that have the ability to do maybe 10 simultaneous shows get their work spread up over a number of days. The issue that we've got this year is that the Fourth of July is on the Saturday itself. None of the vendors are going to be cutting anybody a deal. It's almost effectively going to be the 10 highest jobs, bidders, however you want to call it. The other issue that may or may not come into play is how the overtime is calculated for July 4th holiday that falls directly on the Saturday. So, and, you know, part of my approach is that problem as well. You know, I can't start a fundraising effort, going out to the people, going out to the businesses, without getting a better understanding of whether or not the town is going to engage. And each year, as I've mentioned, that I've had a discussion with the mayor, he's indicated that, you know, he would be looking at the budget, looking at the different departments, what costs were, and, you know, if things could be managed, they would be, and if they're unable to be managed, they wouldn't be. And each year, the budgets come through, there's no additional monies in consideration in the overtime accounts for the fireworks, so therefore, it's our responsibility with the fund, if we want to try to restore it, to come up with that money. So, you know, it's with that that I kind of outlined some other things, you know, why I feel that the fund isn't being looked at in the same light as other things that occur in the town. And I outlined a few of those things with respect to WCI, Spanish Community of Wallingford, the Wallingford Dog Park, and I mainly entered those three because I have good relationships with all those organizations. I didn't want anybody to feel like I was throwing them under the bus. I had discussions with them that I would be bringing up their organizations as points of reference, because all of these organizations, they actually get money from the town in one way, shape, or form. And then on top of that, when they need to leverage town services, they do, and they're not backcharged for it. I didn't want to have a situation be that we would try to come forward, you know, as the nonprofit, and sit here with all the other nonprofits that request funds be injected into their accounts at budget time, you know, like WCI or like SCOW that gets money donated. We're not looking for that. All we're looking for is relief from the city services. That's the way the town can partner with the fund. Just say, look, we know what the city services are going to be, they're pretty much the same year over year, they adjust a little bit for the changes in the wages, the town will cover it. The fund, if you guys can come up with the cost of the show, which is likely to be a lot higher this year, then we'll have the show. But I kind of need that direction now, because without it, we have to make choices, was only six of us on the fund, and if we're going to take up fundraising this year and then maybe possibly entertain other options, we have to make that clear at the onset. So, I mean, I'll give you an example. If the fund were to make a decision based on an outcome either tonight or further in the budget process, that, you know, we're going to be looking for another location because the town won't partner, we're not going to do it up at the schools, I can't have people that make regular donations on the west side of town and in the higher amounts to suddenly become upset, listen, I sent a big check in because I wanted it to be in my backyard, and now you're moving it to the east side of town or the south side of town, or wherever we might be able to go. I need to be clear with the people that are making the donations that, yes, everything's going to be status quo, we're still shooting to do it with the town over on the town grounds, or we're going to be looking at an alternative. So, in order for us to get started, I kind of have to have a little bit more of a direction from the mayor's office or the town, and listen, this is something we figure we can do, or there's just no way to do it at all, and kind of get that said tonight. It doesn't have to be a vote, and I didn't expect it to necessarily be a vote, I know it's not budget time right now, but I got to get a general feeling, so that when I go out to people, I can say, look, I feel pretty confident the town is interested in doing it this way, or I feel pretty confident that the town just feels like it just can't do this. And, you know, again, it's just one of those things where I need some direction in order to move forward, and that's kind of what I'm here for tonight.
Thank you. Mayor, this event falls after July 1, and I know that at times we're funding things in July that came out of the prior year's budget, and at times we aren't, but is this typically processed through the fiscal year in which it occurs?
That's correct. It would be funded by the 2016 budget.
Okay. So, what Mr. Zandry, on behalf of the fund, is asking for would have to be part of your budget proposal, which will come out at the beginning of April, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Laterno.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening.
After sitting up here many years and listening to the back and forth on the firework debate, we'll call it, where I know over the, in the past years, you've tried to get the entire amount funded from the town, and there's been some pushback on that, where it just didn't happen. But this year, I think you found the middle ground, and that middle ground being, you know, you're still willing to go out and raise the funds, and now it becomes a partnership with the town. So, it's a public-private, so what you do is you go out, you raise the funds, and to have the show, and I'm not going to get into the minute detail of how much, I see $11,925 and, you know, all of this police overtime, but I think it is fair to ask the town to pick up the police and fire services and the public, well, I don't see a public works in your budget here.
Well, public works doesn't get included if we don't end up having enough money to restore the R-band. Public works ends up being put in there at that point because we have to pull the show mobile up to the grounds, they have to maintain it that evening and then pull it away.
Okay. I wasn't aware of what public works did, but that's, I think that's fair also, that if you don't put the R-band in, you know, keeping it to the bare bones so that people can at least have a firework show, you know, the band is above and beyond. But I don't know, that's my personal opinion on this, this year, that I think it's a good plan. I think it's a good... I think it's a good, um, public-private coming together and, uh, you know, it's not a lot of money for the town. And it's, it sure is not 20, 24,000 that would be, uh, that would be budgeted by the town. So you know, it, it's, like I said, I, I'll end it there, but it's, I think it's a good, it's a good program. So I, hopefully it'll move forward. You have my support.
Thank you.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Mansfield?
Thank you. Um, I echo Counselor Letourneau's accolades or comments. I, I do think the partnership idea is a good one. I would just welcome or use this as a step one because I think, you know, as the, the fire chief and our police chief are preparing their budgets, nobody ever likes surprises, even if it seems like a small piece of it, there is still prioritization on a very busy weekend for our res, our fire and rescue folks and our police force anyway, um, over, over that Fourth of July holiday. And scheduling on top of that, of course, um, whether it's funding our bodies or funding services or projects like this, um, would, would require their sign off too. So again, as, as you explore step one, step two, I'm, I'm in favor of discussing that or pushing that forward. I would just embrace that, let, let the rest of the chiefs kind of weigh in on, on that opportunity.
Right. And that, and that is one of the reasons why, you know, I, I wanted to have this discussion in a little bit broader than what I normally do because a lot of times their budgets are brought forward and it may or may not become presence of mind at the time of discussion that these monies are included, they're not included, they, they never really were delineated. You go back years ago, the police and fire overtime budget was what it was. They got reduced when the fireworks got pulled out. When they got canceled, those overtime budgets got dropped. So in order to re-include them, if that's what ends up getting decided, they either have to, either the chiefs have to come forward with those amounts already baked in, or they have, you know, the question has to specifically be asked. So is, you know, is your change year over year including this or not? And the other thing that we, we really ought to consider too is because traditionally we've always done it the Saturday after the fourth, so if the fourth fell on a Wednesday, we would do it on the seventh. There's really nothing stopping this town from, it's a, it's a celebration of the Independence Day holiday, it doesn't have to happen on the fourth, we could do it on the 11th, which will save us overtime. It will get us a better rate from the vendor. And the people in town, there might be a few that complain it's not on the fourth proper, but I think the majority of people be, oh gee, we saved it anyway, big deal, it's a week later.
Yeah, I think the, I think being a weekend this year fosters that creativity impetus, especially since you don't have, you know, you're going to pay the fund a lot of years to brainstorm the second half of that, your prices are going up automatically. So I, I do think that you're, you know, you're going to have to explore some of those options anyway. And if I'm not mistaken, the contracts, um, holiday pay is more than, you know, weekend plus holiday.
Right.
You know, you're going to, you're, we're showing increased costs for the town as well.
I mean, we're, again, the, the, the fund, we're smart enough to know that this is something that, you know, it's, it's a like to have, it's not a requirement, it's not a necessity, but we could go through, Celebrate Wallingford's not a requirement, it's not a necessity, but a lot of people like it, it drives a lot of business downtown. And to overlook the, the community aspect of what the fireworks has been, and, and there does, there is business generation out of it, there's a lot of vendors that buy vending permits in order to vend over there, the vendors themselves make money. People go out and buy picnic stuff and go there and eat and drink and do, and, you know, do their little event there. All the people that, you know, um, go to enjoy the show do these different things. So I mean, I, I definitely, I never would have taken this on if I didn't think it was something worth saving, I wouldn't have kept up with it if it wasn't something I thought was important. I mean, it's funny because I actually get, I get asked, you know, do your kids even enjoy the show after all the hard work you put in? I go, they're never even in the country. They go to Poland every summer, they never see the show. I do it because I think it's something that we've done in this town for such a long time and we shouldn't stop doing it. Not if there's a will and the means to do it.
Counselor Parisi?
I have mixed, mixed emotions on this, Jason, and I have all along. I do respect all the hard work that you and your cohorts, if you will, put into this program, and it's, I guess it's been a good thing. Probably the only gripe I have is I wonder how many people from out of town come in to watch it and enjoy it and don't donate. But that's a hard thing to control. I can tell you that I would be in favor of the town and mayor, I would encourage you to make some effort to donate a sum of money. I don't have any ideas to what, but I think we should be able to do a little something to take the pressure off you guys. Hey, listen, you started this, and I'm, I'm not of the mind to let anybody out of it. You start it, you finish it, or you give it up. But I think that in fairness, for the work you've done, I think you should get some help from the town. And I think that would make your life easier, wouldn't it, or wouldn't it?
Well, again, I, I also, I want to stress to your point, you know, the fund's not really looking for monies in, what we're looking for is relief from having to, to come up with the extra.
Charges.
Charges for the, for the city services. I mean, I always had grander hopes that this would be easier to do, that we might be able to tie into some other things, like maybe if it really, really took off, that we could maybe approach Our Lady of Fatima and talk about, you know, they do their own carnival over there, how nice it might be if we could do some sort of a fair or a festival. I had hoped more people would turn out to help us. If I had more bodies, there's more things that we could do. But the reality is what the reality is, people are just too busy, they don't have 36 hours in a day like I do, and they just can't get the things done that, that, that most people, you know, you know, grand hopes to do. But I mean, if it ever came to be that I could work out different partnerships with different people, I would always investigate that. If, if somebody, you know, I mean, just to make an example, because the, the, the animal shelter and the dog park tend to get more money from people because people are much more emotionally attached to their, their pets.
Yeah.
If someday somebody passed away, a veteran or somebody that had a lot of money and decided, you know, this is the type of thing that I want to leave a little sum of my, my, you know, my monies to.
Yeah.
I wouldn't even be here. I would say, listen, Mr. Jones and Mrs. Smith, they both passed away, they left the fund $100,000. We're going to burn that up before we come back to the town and say, look, we're looking for relief. Because we're not about that, we're about making sure that this show is here next year.
Well, and I, I, I say that I feel the town should help you because I do understand, I've worked many projects, they're not always easy. And as you said, it's, sometimes it's hard to excite people on what you're trying to do. And when you get a project like that, it's all on you, and it's a lot of work. I've seen you out there on occasion, I thought if I was a little younger, that I'd have jumped in and helped you. I did help you in the beginning and.
You did.
Helped you with money. But, but I, I think for the people from town that do see it, I think it would be nice for us to, well, I don't care how you want to get it, whether we take it off some of the extra costs or give you money outright. Uh, I would hope we could find something creative where, uh, we could maybe work with one of the unions, I doubt it, but I'd like to see it tried.
Well, I've, I've discussed with the police and the fire departments, one of the main issues with the volunteering of time or hours, it can't be done because what happens is, if you have a police, I just, the unions don't allow, but just to give a very generic example, if a police officer were able to donate their time and they were to twist their ankle, now, did they twist their ankle on their own time?
Yeah.
Or were they on the clock but donating? It's just too complicated. The easiest way to approach it is to have the town just incorporate into their own budgets, the cost of, of police, fire, and, and public works, it's no different than WCI, and I use them as an example, they get $80,000 allocated to them at the budget time to run their organization for the entire year. And when they have Celebrate Wallingford, they're not back billed, they're not given a bill for police, fire, overtime, whatever's being worked over there, it's just, the town just covers the expense.
But they do raise a lot of money too. I mean, it isn't that it's a, you know, it's an all give.
No, I didn't mean to imply.
They do support the major part of that, Celebrate Wallingford.
Right, but they are extended $80,000 in their, they're given a budget of $80,000 from the town.
Yeah.
And then they're given those town services on the top. So they, they do, they do get, a big get.
I understand. I'm not, I don't want to.
No, no, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to.
Make an issue out of it, but I had been in, active in that, that group for years, and I know that, uh, many years we paid for Wallingford Center with the money we raised.
Oh, I know, and, and if you go all the way back, Wallingford Center Inc. used to be completely self-sufficient.
Self-sufficient, that's right.
They never, they, you know, they never had a line item in the budget at all.
Okay, well, that was my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you have something?
Just to clarify, labor law, federal labor law prevents anyone from volunteering for their employer.
It's too bad.
Any other comments from the council? Mr. Zandry, I, I do feel compelled to applaud you for your efforts. You know, this town has continued to see fireworks as a result of your work, and I, I think that is certainly beyond noteworthy. But with respect to allocating police and fire overtime in the, the upcoming budget, I'm going to tell you that I'm going to wait and see. And I'm going to look at the big picture and, and see where this fits in, but I will certainly consider what you've had to say. And I appreciate your taking the time to make your presentation.
Well, I appreciate the time, you know, I, I understand that the, you know, the, the agendas can get full, I was appreciative of the fact there was a light agenda this evening and it worked out that way. I mean, I, you know, I, I want to add one additional point, which I'm, I'm sure you're all aware of, and it probably doesn't necessarily need to be mentioned, but I mean, when, when this event first got canceled, there was a, there was less money in the general fund balance than there is today. And, you know, just this last year, we added $2 million to that account, and we closed the books on the fiscal report last year with $760,000 left unspent, budgeted but unspent. And that's, that's good. I don't want to come across like that's a bad thing. It's a good thing when we, when you figure a certain amount of money, then don't end up needing to use it all. Um, it, it also allows me to say that because we're so smart and prudent with what we do and allocate and spend only what we need, it does allow for this little bit of wiggle room. And I'm not trying to make this sound like $12,000 worth of overtime is a rounding error, but when you look at a $155 million budget, it's effectively a rounding error. This money can be found within the budget, it can be found in positions that don't get filled, or when someone departs and we don't fill it right away, there's a lot of creative ways to do it. And I'm looking for that creativity. And I, and that's why I came forward today with even the suggestion, if we want to talk about having the show on, on July the 11th, I have zero issue with that because to me, that's a smart thing to do. I just kind of need a little bit of direction, you know, for that particular part of it.
Certainly. Counselor Parisi has a question for you.
Thank you. If you did it a week later, do you have any idea what the effect would be on the total cost?
Well, based on, based on what the original cost of the show was five years ago, when we didn't really open dialogue with them, it was $16,000. We're down to about, about 12 right now, 11 and change. I'm sure that on the Fourth of July proper, these, the show would be probably 18, $19,000 for the same type of show. So right away, it brings the fundraising down, probably back to the 12 or 13,000 level. It makes it a lot more doable, even if the cost went up $1,000 just year over year, it's still doable. It definitely is going to save on the overtime. Because I have to believe if you're, if you're going to have them out on the fourth en masse like we normally do, it's going to cost more money. I mean, the changes, the changes just in the regular services since the start of this thing, police overtime's gone up 16%, the fire department's gone up 27%, the fire marshal's office went up 12 and a half percent, and the board of ed costs for the janitor went up 45%. Now, that's just based on contractual changes. Now, in, in the situation of the police overtime, maybe they added a couple more officers, I don't know. But the end, the end result is that's going to be much higher this year. So that's why I really do think that if we're going to be looking at this, if it helps to render a decision to do it on the, on the 11th, that's what I would suggest that we try to do. I will personally tell you that if for some reason there is no ability to offset the cost of city services and I were to engage our members, gee, let's go out and try and fundraise, we would be targeting the 11th because we know that the costs are going to be more trying to hold it on the fourth. We would be targeting a week later just to try to raise the funds for what should be less money because it's a week after the fact, the effect. You know, it's already, the event is gone and the costs should start coming down because they've got less work on that weekend.
Certainly makes sense.
So if I, if I may ask the mayor, would, regardless of how it comes out with respect of, of the budgeting of the overtime, if we wanted to try to hold it a week later, does the, does the, you know, does, does your office have any issue with doing that?
At this point, uh, we have a meeting every year with all of the departments that would be involved, and we arrive at what is the best date. So that certainly be, can be a consideration, but I, I don't know what the viewpoints of the departments, and that's recreation, police, fire, public works, fire marshal, et cetera. So, um, until, until we have that meeting, I don't know, I don't know a reason it can't be. But, you know, this year's going to be a very difficult budget.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Onto item eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Sections 1-206D of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. I declare the council in executive session, and I ask that the council chambers be cleared.
Second.
No, we, we don't have a motion yet.
Let's make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we come out of executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There being no more business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
Don't move.
Just, just one second, did you all receive my letter on the storm water management?
Yes, well, I did, yes.
Everyone should have gotten the letter.
Email, right? It was in our pack.
Okay. I, I would just urge you to contact legislators or let people know that there's a real concern there.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, there being no more business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Second.
All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I declare the meeting adjourned.
Good night.